Pledge led by Superintendent Doherty.
Dear only Father, we come to you this evening asking for your blessing and help as we gather here together. We pray for guidance and wisdom in the matters at hand. Help us to work together to make the best decisions for our students and employees at HCCSC. In just name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call this regular meeting to order and we'll begin with a roll call of members.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. McLellan?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Present.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Warpup? Is absent. Mr. Yarker?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Okay, we will move to A5. Are there any revisions of the agenda?
No, there are no revisions to the agenda, Mr. Roth.
Okay. Then we'll go to B1, public comment. I don't think anyone signed up to address the board, so. All right, good guess. Okay, then we'll move on to C1, core values discussion.
Yeah, this evening we have several core values to report to the board. First is congratulations Corporation Nurse Meg Friesen, who recently received the 2021 Stephen L. Bailey Award from the Youth Services Bureau. This award is presented to an individual or group who has made a difference in the lives of young people through activities that empower, encourage, and support young people and their families in Huntington County. Meg was selected for her work in the overall health of our young people. NYSB says she is vital in the suicide prevention efforts in Huntington County. Again, this is an example of stakeholder focus. Another one is congratulations Huntington North High School marching band who participated in the semi-state on Saturday, October 30th at Pike High School. I was able to attend that and they did a great job with their show, Amazon, and you would be very proud how they represented themselves or family in our school, so congratulations to Mr. Pettick and the band. Our third one is congratulations Huntington North High School Junior OTC for earning national rankings as they resolved their competition this weekend. The ladies are now ranked seventh in the nation and the males are ranked 14th in the nation, so congratulations to all of those participants. Our fourth one is Lincoln Elementary held their Heath Garner Scholarship Chili Supper this past Friday. This was the 13th year to raise funds to support the scholarship that is awarded to former Lincoln Elementary students and honors former Lincoln Elementary student Heath Garner. This is an example of stakeholder focus. I was able to attend that and the principal, Mrs. Yarker, took a pie in the face and so did the assistant principal, Mr. Troyer. So, fun evening, a lot of people were there to participate and I think they raised some good money. Also, there was a talent show, four students were there, were able to participate, show their talents, so it was a great evening. Our fifth one, congratulations to our Lincoln Unified Robotics Team. Unified sports join people with and without disabilities on the same team. They competed Saturday, November 6th at Taylor University in the first unified robotics competition in the nation. They placed third out of eight teams in their division. Five students built and programmed the robot to complete three missions. They represent Lincoln and HCCSC well. A huge shout out to Kerry Neal for taking a risk and guiding these outstanding students. Additionally, this team met all four pillars of learning for special education, our Special Olympics, earning Lincoln Elementary the status of a unified champion's school. Also like to thank Lynn Okun, our Assistant Director of Special Education, and also Beth Husband, our Director of Special Education, working with Mrs. Neal and those students. This is an example of stakeholder focus, high expectations, high achievement accountability.
Our sixth core value, we'd like to say congratulations to Huntington North High School seniors Addie Wiley and Harrison Niswander, who both ran in the IHSA double A state cross-country finals on Saturday, October 30th in Terre Haute. Addie finished seventh out of 205 runners and Harris finished 120th out of 208 runners. Addie Wiley also earned her first team All-State honors and verbally committed to the University of Colorado on Friday afternoon to run both track and cross-country for the Buffaloes. These are examples of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. We'd also like to say congratulations to Huntington North High School tennis player, Carson Kitchen, who was selected as one of 36 in the state to compete in the Boys Senior All-Star Tennis Event that was held this past Saturday, November 6th in Pelton. His team went 3-0, undefeated against the other Indiana All-Star teams at the event. This is also an example of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. We'd also like to recognize the Huntington North High School Boys Tennis Team with the following state honors. Team Academic All-State, Carson Kitchen was also Individual Academic All-State, Reed Eckert and Matthew Wile, All-State Honorable Mention for Doubles, Carson Kitchen, All-State Honorable Mention for Singles. Again, high expectations and high achievement and accountability were these examples. Also, we'd like to recognize our Horseman Elementary Library Clerk Rhonda Bachover and the PTO hosted their first storybook walk last Thursday evening. Each classroom made a scarecrow that could be voted on. There was a candy corn counting contest, complete with prizes, a hot dog stand, Tom's Hot Coffee Truck for parents, and each family could read pages from a book that they took through their walk together. Again, an example of stakeholder focus. And our final core value, we'd like to say congratulations to Salamone Elementary teacher Jennifer Herberg for being named as the Herald Press 2021 Huntington County Greatest Teacher School Staff Member. This is an example of stakeholder focus and high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. And that concludes our core values for this evening.
Thank you. Any other core values? All right, we'll move on to D1, COVID-19 update.
Yes, this evening we'll share our latest numbers that we have for students and staff that, and with COVID. So, as you can see here with our November 5th, you can see currently right now, number of staff positive that we've had up to this point in the year, 64. Number of staff quarantined currently right now, six. Number of students positive total throughout the district is 389, and number of students quarantined is down to 71. So, our plan is working, we feel like that's going very well, and not doing very many quarantines at this point. So, at this point, we will continue to continue with the plan as we have been using. The one thing that would like to make known, and if you can still see, we're still in orange right now, talking with Dr. Fleeger, our schools are probably a little bit better than what our community spread is. Our community spread is higher probably than what you're going to see in the schools. So, again, after Halloween, those things, and so, again, we're still in orange. We will continue with the same plan that we have. The one thing that I would like to make note is that now with students being eligible for the vaccines, HCCSC will not mandate any vaccines for any students, that will be a parent choice. So, again, that's a parent choice for their child to receive the vaccine at this point. So, again, that's the big thing that's been coming out. You can see all ages are now being eligible to receive the vaccine and we will not mandate vaccine for students and that will be a parent choice. And that's all I have for this evening for COVID update, so any questions at this time? Okay?
All right, we'll move on to E1, Board of School Trustee Districts.
Yes, this evening we have Joe Wiley, corporation lawyer. He is here to talk about our school board districts. One thing that after the 2020 census, we're required to look at these districts, whether or not we need to adjust our districts by looking at those populations, and this is something that we are mandated by the state to do and put a resolution. So, Mr. Wiley is here to explain where we're at currently. I know we worked, he worked with Shelley Scepter, the clerk, and talked to him, kind of show you his thoughts on that. So, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. If you look on the screen, we're divided into districts and by our charter, there are seven, seven seats. You must reside in a district and you are voted on every four years, with half, four of the board being voted on in one cycle, election, general election cycle, and the other three in the next general election cycle. Beyond even the state statute, state constitution, even the federal constitution requires that all election districts are basically one man, one vote, that House districts, locals, county council commissioners, House of Representatives are always going to have targets of the same population in the same district. And so, every 10 years, as the census comes out, we have to look, we're required, to look at our districts to determine if they are, the term is imbalance. Now, it's impossible to make every district exactly the same, but the case law and the regulations and decision-making allows you to be within a certain variance of population and you're still considered then to be in balance. Of course, geographically Huntington County is challenged in that 80% of the population lives in the north half of the county. The south half of the county, six townships, only has 20% of the overall population. So, one of the challenges is, go ahead and screen it up there, you'll see that Mr. Warpup's district actually covers five complete townships, where if you go down to the top, you'll note that Mr. Melcher's district is just two townships. The, I think, Mr. Roth's district is the, is the yellow, basically, two townships, the north side of town. Mr. Allen's district is Lancaster and Dallas Township and a little bit of Southern Huntington Township. So, you have to keep that in mind, too. Now, in your social studies class and civics, there's a thing called gerrymandering, where political parties can, can look at these maps and start saying, okay, we're going to make this district vote either more Republican or more Democrat, and of course, at the national level, you get some very strange, and even at the state level, strange-looking districts. But, they have to be contiguous and they have to be basically in a, in a similar type area. And for us, that's not, it's a challenge, but it's not so overwhelming that we can't, we can't manage it. We also have to keep in mind the precinct voting. Now, our voting machines are fairly sophisticated, very sophisticated, in that they know that if Tim goes to the, to the ballot box, they know exactly where he lives and they can plug that into the machine, but we generally try to keep your districts within precincts so when, when people do go to vote, they're going to know who they're voting for representative. Now, again, with, with voting centers that we've gone to, and again, the sophistication of the voting machines, there's been some evolution of that, so it's not like everybody in Salamone Township only votes in Salamone Township. They can vote in Huntington, they can vote in Roanoke, they can vote wherever. So, so that's some of the things of modern, of modern technology. So, our, our goal here is to make sure that these are in balance. Now, whether it's a, a good or bad, the population of Huntington County's not changed. We'd like to see it growing, and of course, if one section of the county grew a whole lot over the last 10 years, we probably have to look at some shifting in order to, which we did 10 years ago, in order to accommodate the, the districts in balance. So, if you go ahead and put up the, the analysis. If you have Runkel at the courthouse, is a wonderful partner on this. Shelley Scepter have provided us, I know you can't read that, but if you go down to the, to the, to the bottom, Cindy, the, the target for us, there are, there are 36,662, second column in red, 36,662 people in Huntington County. And so, if we divide that into seven equal districts, our target number is 5,200, 5,237 people. If you look across and the districts go, there's a black number and a red number, the, the, the black number is voters, the red number is population, and, and we target this to population, we don't necessarily target it to register voters. You'll see that as, as we have them now, if our target's 5,237, District 1's 5,330, District 2's 5,315, District 4's 5,210, or 3, I'm off a digit there. 4's 5,315, 5's 4980, 6's 5,205, and 7's 5,307. That gives us a deviation of 4.29%. The, when these things have been challenged, anything within 5% deviation is considered to be very good, very much in balance. So, just directly, there is no reason to, to change our, our districts this year, so it's my recommendation, it's the recommendation of, of that, the elections clerk, that, that we just maintain the boundary lines of the districts as the same for another, another 10 years. If you could go to the city map, Cindy, the only thing that's a little strange in our, our allocations, if, if you think of Huntington City as Huntington Township, the, the, there's precincts within the city, basically within the bypass, but then Huntington Township has four precincts, 11, 11A, 12, and 12A at the top and the bottom. We do divide those Huntington Township precincts into the north, northern ones go in Mr. Roth's district, the southern ones go, the eastern southern one goes to, who's the south side? Ryan Walls' district, and then a little bit on the, the west side is in Tim's, also in Tim's district, and even there's some there that's, no, I guess Kevin's is all within the city, the city, the city limits. And not to confuse you to, to completely understand why that's being done, it's mainly south of the river, north of the river, the Huntington Township precinct is divided, which is the, which is the only township that has that type of, of, type of division. And, and again, with the sophistication of our, our voting machines, once they know your address, they plug you in and they'll give you, they'll give you the ballot. One, just last thing, of course, in the next cycle, this is, your decision here tonight will last until 2030, so for '22, '24, '26, '28, and '30, the next five school board elections, this will be, these will be the district allocations. Mr. Melcher, Allen, Yarker, and Wall were just elected in '20, so they will not be up until '24. Districts 2, 3, and 5, Mr. Roth, Mr. Warpup, and Mr. McLellan, their districts will be up in the general election next November. So, that's something to keep in mind. So, recommendation is, I provided you with a resolution that outlines that you've looked at these, you've examined these, you've looked at the numbers, and that you find that based on the 2020 census data workbook, that we are in balance, and there does not need to be any change. And again, with consultation with elected officials, we believe that we're well within the, the standard deviation of what's allowed in trying to keep the districts in balance with, and considering keeping like people together. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
I know there were no voters in Huntington 13.
Yeah, Huntington 13 has no voters, that's correct.
But do we not need to list it in case there ever is one?
You know, I think on my exhibit, they may not be, but I believe on...
Sorry, election nerd. I don't know that you have it listed, so I didn't see it, I just...
No, I don't know that I do. 13, if you, is, isn't that the gas tanks?
Yep, well, it's the, this, it's where Helena is, that area. Because the city annexed it, they did a spot annexation.
Yeah, and, and so there's no residents in there.
I mean, I don't think there ever will be, but you know, just for completeness and, because I'm a nerd and I know that there is a Huntington 13.
You said Huntington 13 is listed at the top under District 1.
Oh, it is, yeah, it is.
I completely missed it up there.
Well, thank you.
Good job, good. He's even smarter than I thought.
I should have known that, it's in my territory.
And that makes sense, because that's exactly where it should be.
I literally just noticed it.
He campaigned, you bad boy. Did you campaign there in 13?
I didn't. I feel bad now.
No, thanks, Mr. Rothford. Yeah.
That's a trivia question during Election Day to catch people, so that's, it's the only reason I know it.
Any other, any other questions?
No.
Just to be clear, the next time we can do what happened would be the board that's around in 2030.
In 2030.
So, it will not be brought up before then.
No, even if, even if districts have come out of balance, it's not, it's a 10-year, well, because you don't have any numbers. It's based on the census and you will not have new census numbers until 2030. I, I, I do think, and of course, if, if we had time to put more on our plate, looking at our whole representation format, could be looked at. I don't think it's good that every two years, basically half the county doesn't have anything to vote on. A lot of school districts have at-large seats, plus residency seats, and, which allows votes every two years on, on issues if there becomes a very, very hot issue. When this, when our plan was adopted, that was, I think, and I know it was discussed, but what was adopted was this, you living within the seven, the seven districts.
Election nerd, again, that was actually the proposal put forward by the, the school board at the time.
The board, and it got, yeah, and it did get, it did get voted down, but that's something the board can initiate on their own, there is a big long process for that, and you'd have to account for, again, keeping things in balance, but it would look more like our Huntington County Council, where there are four districts, counties divided into four districts, and then there's three at-large seats, people that run for the whole, whole county. Having said that, that has nothing to do with tonight, all that has to do with giving information for the future. Your only job tonight is to affirm that, as the resolution says, that you've looked at the, you've reviewed the numbers, you've met your responsibility in looking to keep districts in balance, and you believe them to be in balance, and Mr. Doherty is then required to notify the clerk of the court that we've adopted this resolution, and this has to be done before the end of the year, but thanks to Cindy and Chad, they got us on this quickly. So, any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed resolution?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any new questions or comments?
Thank you for doing this. It could have gotten interesting and it's really nice that it went smooth.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
I love numbers.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve then. We'll now go to F1 through 16, the consent agenda.
Just a second here, Mr. Roth, I'm having a little issues with, with my connection here. Okay, all right, yes, for the consent agenda, we have several items here. F1 is the regular meeting minutes on October 18, 2021. F2, executive session minutes, October 28, 2021. We have a couple field trips. This is one that we put a blanket statement out for any of our sports teams or extracurricular teams that qualify for state tournaments. Wanted you to be aware that the IHSA cross-country state finals were on the 8th of November, and we were able to take Mr. Harrison Niswander from the boys and Addie Wiley from the girls. F4, professional leave request, we have one of those, Deb Doherty going to the High Ability Conference in Indianapolis on the 6th and 7th of December. And we have a certified employee resignation, Ariel Davison, art horseman effective on 10/22 of this year. Classified employee resignations, Sarah Gerhart, bus aide, Deanna Herrandine, paraprofessional Flint Springs, Jennifer Higgins, paraprofessional Flint Springs. We have a few ECA resignations. We have one, Andrew Tharp, sixth grade boys basketball Crestview. New certified employees, Phil Bailey will be now the new middle school alternative education teacher. Jenny Elliott, kindergarten employment recommendation for Andrews Elementary. New classified employees, Jessica Ankeny, paraprofessional Flint Springs, Teresa Bingham, paraprofessional Huntington North, Suprina Goodyear, bus driver, Jessica Landergan, technology lab assistant, Roanoke, Rayanna Mikelec, is paraprofessional Huntington North High School, Joanne Tilden, bus aide, and Curry Vanover, bus driver. New ECA employees, Holly Allen, elementary boys basketball, Lincoln, Travis Bowlinger, robotics, John Bordeaux, robotics, Cheryl Carrington, robotics, Noah Gunter, math bowl Andrews, Tim Ivy, robotics, Lincoln, Peter Kenshin, middle school tennis, Crestview, and At Little, robotics, Andrews, Anna Perkins, math bowl, Andrews, Sarah Perkins, assistant girls track, Huntington North High School, Ryan Ringo, middle school musical, Crestview, Marissa Stefan, math bowl, Lincoln, Amanda Stevenson, Junior National Honor Society, Lincoln, Angela Stratton, robotics, Lincoln, Jamison Stevens, math bowl, Andrews. One of the reason with all of these new ECAs, these were the ones that we just came up with this year with robotics, trying, with equity and access, and real excited that these are going to be filled for all of our elementary students to have these experiences, so real excited about that. E11, excuse me, F11, new classified employee transfer, Lisa Winkleman, transfer from paraprofessional working 28.7 hours a week to paraprofessional working 32.5 hours a week at Flint Springs. Long-term substitutes, Jared Bartram, long-term substitute Huntington North High School, from 11, 9 through the end of the year, Jenny Higgins, grade 4, Salamone, from 10/21 to approximately to the end of the semester on 12/17. Elizabeth Rice, art horseman from 10/25 to 12/17 in the semester. Paraprofessional stipend recommendation, and what this is, this kind of coincides with the stipend that our teachers received in our ED classrooms and our essential skills classrooms. These are paraprofessionals that work in these classrooms, and they are going to be compensated, there'll be $500 given for the first semester and $500 given the second semester. These people have additional duties in which they have to change, feed, and they have a lot of different activities and responsibilities they have for our students, so that is something that we're putting forth to kind of coincide with what we're giving our ED and our essential skills teachers. 14, a pay adjustment for classified employee, Renal Klepper, that was not correct when we first came to the board the first time, so we're correcting that. And 15, or F15 is request to accept donations. Crestview Middle School is requesting permission to accept three donations. The first is from Bobby and Sarah Kemp in the amount of $25. The second is from the Huntington Chiropractic Center in the amount of $50, and the third is from Bendix in the amount of $300. These donations will be used to hire companies for the new music, musical and clinicians. HCCSC Elementary Schools, Andrews, Flint Springs, Horseman, Lincoln, Roanoke, and Salamone are each requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $200 from the Youth Services Bureau of Huntington toward the materials for the Red Ribbon Week. Riverview Middle Schools, the third one, is requesting permission to accept donation in the amount of $300 from the Huntington Theater Guild to help fund the competitions and to purchase an advertisement in the program for the school musical. And our 16 is, F16 is, is our accounts payable and payroll vouchers, so asking approval for those items.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doherty. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any particular item that anyone would like to pull out before we vote? Okay, any questions or comments before we vote? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Move on to G1, YMCA pool agreement.
Yes, what you have in front of you is the agreement between HCCSC and the YMCA for us to allow to use their swimming pool. We do have an agreement, this agreement that we're getting ready to enter will be for the '21-'22 school year and the '22-'23 school year. And basically, we rent the pool for our swim teams for mid-October, and really, and through no later than April 1st, and that is also used for our middle school swim team. So this contract is pretty much for the same amount of money that we have used in, used this in the past, and again, asking approval from the board to approve this contract to the YMCA to use their pool.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the proposed agreement?
Make a motion to approve the pool agreement with the YMCA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the agreement. Move to G2, Sunbelt Staffing Client Agreement.
Yes, we brought this to the board, I believe, a couple meetings ago, and the person that we were able to hire is not doing this service anymore, so we had to go with a different company. And so this is what we're asking for approval from the board, and this is, they will oversee with special education, we're looking at some of our therapists, again, through that telepractice, and so this person will be having to oversee what our students will be receiving in the classroom. So this is a state requirement that we have to have. We thought we had this settled with the person earlier, and that person did not work out, so we're bringing this back to the board, so needing your approval this evening.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion regarding this agreement?
Motion to approve this Sunbelt Staffing Client Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the Sunbelt Agreement. Move to G3, Request to Dispose of Excess Equipment.
Yes, with the Learning Center, with Mrs. Drummond writing a grant for the Don Wood Foundation, over $400,000, with trying to get new precision machine equipment, the Precision Machine Lab at Huntington County Community Schools is, currently has the HH Roberts CNC vertical mill. With the addition of our new CNC mill purchased through the Don Wood Foundation, we are no longer in the need of this item. So rather than move it to a new advanced manufacturing lab, we prefer to dispose of it at this time. So asking permission, dispose the HH Roberts CNC vertical mill.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to dispose of excess equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Will it be sold?
Yeah, what we will do, we will sell that, and that money will then go back into helping with repairing of other equipment they have up there. So that's what we've typically done with that.
Any other questions? All right, we'll vote on the motion to dispose of the equipment. Move to H1, any thing any board members would like to say?
Fall ISBA event at the Gaglines was, I think, last week or the week before. I attended it. Some good information, getting ready for the legislative session, short session, so they don't expect too many bills, but there seems to be a lot possibly in the pipeline, so more to come.
Good. Any other items of discussion by board members? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?